The time has come. If I could have Pastor James Oralphone from the Saint Joseph and Kathy Church is going to lead us in invocation. And then will be a salute to the nation's flag by Councilwoman Hernandez. All please stand. Yes, welcome, sir.
I'm going to read the gospel according to Saint Luke. Jesus said to them, "The king of the Gentiles loaded over them, and those in authority over them are addressed as benefactors. But among you it shall not be so. Rather let the greatest among you be as the youngest and the leader as the servant. For who is greater, the one seated at table or the one who serves? Is it not the one seated at table? I am among you as the one who serves." The Gospel of the Lord. Let's bow our heads for the invocation and asking the Lord for his blessing tonight. Almighty and benevolent Father, we thank you for our elected leaders. We thank you for the years of dedicated service of the outgoing leaders. Because all the good they have done was a reflection of your true and eternal goodness. And for the incoming elected leaders, bless them and strengthen them as they begin their tenure to serve our community and this great city of Barstow. May our city council govern with humility and goodness. Where the only motivation is to serve, may it always seek what is just, peaceful, and life-giving. Bless our people and our city. May our local businesses prosper, our churches a place where we encounter your divine presence, and our community a place of tranquility and peace among people of diverse cultures. May we abide by your laws and commandments so that together we be faithful stewards of your temporal and spiritual gifts and blessings. We humbly ask you these petitions through our Lord Jesus Christ in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. That was a wonderful and fitting prayer.
Ready, let's pledge allegiance to our wonderful country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, every being, and just as thou art in heaven.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council. Before we begin tonight's regular meeting, I need to state Councilmember Cruz will be joining by Zoom utilizing the reasonable accommodation under Attorney General's Opinion 23-1002. With that, roll call is complete and all members are present.
Thank you. Well, we have a packed house here tonight. Wow, it's great to see this. We're going to go through agenda items one through four, and after the fourth agenda item, this is the swearing-in of our city clerk, and we're going to take a recess. So I just want to make that announcement up front. Of a few readings I must do. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar, please so indicate by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations were required or necessary, a 48-hour notice would automatically be given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics. As your elected governing body, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approve. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy, expecting the same in return. Decisions made tonight will be in the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. To the governors. Review and approval of the agenda. This is the time for members of the governing board to call for rearranging the order of the agenda, adding items to or removing items from the agenda, or removing items from the consent calendar for discussion and/or separate actions. Items may only be added to the agenda as allowed by state law, including Government Code Section 549, 54.2, Subdivision B, allowing emergency items to be added by majority vote and allowing items that arose to the city's attention at the agenda posting deadline, but which require immediate action to be added by a two-thirds vote of the council members present at the meeting, or if less than two-thirds of the council members are present, a unanimous vote of those present. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and ask for a motion to rearrange the agenda to move the council comments to allow the incoming mayor and the incoming new council members to make their speeches, their welcome speeches, introduction speeches, whichever it may be.
Okay, well, see, once I swear in, this is on your item four, and once I swear in our city clerk, then she will then be swearing in the council. So I really think it would be premature for our new mayor to speak before he's sworn in.
It would be after item number four, after the swearing-in, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so you're proposing, so let's see, what we would do. Agenda item one. Then we'd do agenda item three, and then agenda item four, and then council votes.
Mayor, if I could assist, I believe the request is to shift the council comments, Ellen Business of the Council moment, to after the new roll call, after item four. So we would have the swearing-in of the new council members and the continually elected officials, then the roll call with the newly constituted council, then council comments, and then the rest of the agenda as stated. I believe that was the request.
Thank you. It is. I'm looking for a second.
Okay, well, see, council comments, I don't see the council comments in one through four.
It's not. It's at the end of the agenda right now.
Right, at the very, very end of the.
The very last item, or second last item.
Yeah, and that's, it will be gone by then. Okay. So, repeat it again?
So it would be to approve the agenda as stated with one adjustment shifting Business of the Council to right after the roll call with a new council.
Okay. Okay.
And I believe you have a motion in a second.
Okay. We can do that. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other question, and maybe this is for you. On item number seven. You know what, I'll wait. I'll reserve my question for then. Thank you.
Okay, I see. Okay, that's with the new council. Okay, vote, please.
Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote? Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote?
I believe with her silence, she's perhaps not here right now.
So the motion has, the motion to approve the agenda by moving council comments after the roll call of the new council has been approved.
So these are council comments. I want to make clarification. These are council comments of the current council?
No, that would be the new, the council sitting at that moment, the new council.
Right, okay, yeah, no problem, yeah, because that doesn't affect this council, okay. All right, sounds good. So we're going to go into presentations. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Barstow reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 5th. Our presenter is our city clerk, current city clerk, as well as our new city clerk, Andrea Flores.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and guests. Before you tonight is Resolution 5195-2024 regarding the general municipal election. The City of Barstow held its general municipal election on November 5th, 2024 to fill the following vacancies. Mayor for a full term of four years. Member of the City Council District 3 for a full year term of four years. Member of the City Council District 4 for a full term of four years. City Treasurer for a full term of four years. City Clerk for a full term of four years. The County Register of Voters completed the canvas of election and declared and finalized the election results as follows. Timothy Silva was elected as mayor for the full term of four years. Barbara Rose was elected as council member for District 3 for the full term of four years. John Tex Williams was elected as council member for District 4 for the full term of four years. Michael Lewis was elected as city treasurer for the full term of four years. And lastly, Andrea Flores was elected as city clerk for the full term of four years. A resolution declaring the election results as determined by the San Bernardino County ROV is attached for your review, and it's therefore recommended that the City Council adopt Resolution 5195-2024. And that concludes my report, and would welcome a motion on this item to accept the election results.
I'll make a motion and we accept him.
Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote? The motion to approve item one passes unanimously.
Thank you. Looking at the agenda here, Andrea Flores, looks like you're just a top performer right now.
I am.
Okay.
So our presentation, our item two is our presentation of proclamation to Paul Anthony Courtney. So if you'd like to get to the center of stage here?
Oh, okay. And then right after I get the proclamation, I do have a few things I need to say.
And if counsel would like to join him as well? The proclamation reads, "Dr. Paul Anthony Courtney, an outstanding citizen of the City of Barstow, who has always shown a great love for our community, was first elected as the city's mayor in 2020. And whereas during this time, Paul served the city in many capacities, including as a chairperson for the Barstow Fire Protection District, and whereas as a city representative, Paul also served as the League of California Cities Policy Committee, San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Board, the Southern California Association of Governments, to name just a few. And whereas during his tenure with the city, Paul devoted himself to the well-being of the community in which he lives, always showing care and concern, and always having the city's best interests at heart. And whereas the commitment Paul has shown to the City of Barstow is evidenced by the number of years he has devoted himself to public service and the courtesy he has extended to fellow city council members, staff, and the public. And whereas after four years of faithful and dedicated service to the City of Barstow, Paul is now leaving the city council, and it is only fitting that he be recognized for giving so unselfishly of himself as a council member and as mayor. Now therefore, the City of Barstow hereby recognizes and thanks Dr. Paul Anthony Courtney for a job well done, for his faithful and dedicated service to the City of Barstow and its citizens, and for his part in making Barstow a great place to live, work, and play. And further, we wish him good health and happiness, and many hours of laughter and love with his family and friends. Signed and sealed at Barstow, California, the 16th day of December 2024."
I do have a few things I want to say, but I'm going to go. To make the farewell speech. What a fitting proclamation, and I do so appreciate this. Yes, I have served for four years and a few days as the elected mayor, and it's definitely been a journey of trials and tribulations. How it's been quite rewarding, and as I go to my next position at the state level with the California Investment Forum, which I do encourage you to go to the site, you're going to see what I'm doing. So when you see me in Colombia, or Brazil, or China, or wherever, I'm doing what I'm doing with the California Investment Forum, so you'd be expecting to hear a little bit about that. As many are aware, I was in China a couple months ago, not representing the City of Barstow, nor as the elected mayor. They just identified that, and I was definitely proud to be from Barstow and actually to be the mayor, et cetera, et cetera. But I'll start with this. Initially, we're going to do 11 minutes, but I actually got this down to seven and a half minutes, and I want to be able to talk to all who are paying attention, especially those who are in attendance and those in TV land. Ladies and gentlemen, my family, distinguished guests, and my dear fellow residents of the great City of Barstow. As I sit here, the last few moments in this big chair, yes, it's warm, but it's been exciting, and I've actually loved it. It's been a fast four years, but a long four years. I am filled with a profound sense of pride and gratitude. The truth, nothing but the truth, will help me guide. These years have shaped me in many ways that I could never imagine, but I am deeply honored to serve and have served this great city. As we all are aware, Barstow is built on the spirit of resilience, diversity, and unity, a reflection of the very values that define most of us. They say from the hills of California, but more importantly to the heart of our community, Barstow, we are bound by a shared commitment to progress, justice, and unwavering belief that everyone, no matter who you are, where you come from, what your background is, deserves to sit at the table and in the seat if you choose. Yes, even you deserve to sit at the table. As many are aware, diversity is our strength and inclusion is our foundation. It's not just about inviting different voices at the table, but truly hearing, respecting, and empowering those voices. Effectiveness is about representing the people it serves and ensuring every community here in our great City of Barstow, every group and every individual in Barstow is heard, valued, and represented. Especially our city management, our city leadership, our city first responders, and the city staff that work 24/7 to ensure our life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness right here in our great city. I know firsthand the power of diversity, and unfortunately, I also know firsthand what it feels like to be treated unfairly, falsely accused, and I'll borrow the word from our newly-elected Honorable John Tex Williams, bullshit as we most know it. Thank you for that word there, Mr. Williams. Throughout my tenure, I have faced challenges, unfair treatment, and at times outright injustice. But through it all, I remain steadfast because serving this city, our city is bigger than any personal obstacle that any one of us may face. Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of skin, but by the content of their character." Believe it or not, these words resonate with me. I live them every day. As your elected mayor, I have always strived to lead with integrity, to prioritize education, and to serve you with the best of my abilities. But let me be clear. Unfair treatment and injustice has had, has had no place. But let me be clear, unfair treatment and injustice has had, has had no place in 1999, 2020, '21, '23, '24, and soon to be '25. What has happened to me during my time in office and what happened to past city manager Willie Hopkins Jr., as well as past city assistant manager Tommy, Cody Hopkins, as well as others who have left our city, should have never happened. And we as a community must be band together to sure ensure this never happens again. And many know what I'm talking about, the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. The weight of past injustices may not yet be fully recognized, because they're not, but they will be, but the discredit and humiliation that comes with it serves as an example and a reminder that exists here in Barstow. If we, the people, allow unfair and unjust treatment to continue, we risk setting a dangerous precedent. And believe it or not, this is a call to action. While I chose not to read round for election, I want to assure you I will be back. Know that my journey in public service is far from over. As former President Barack Obama also said, "The best way not to feel hopeless is to do something and get involved." That is exactly what I intend and continue to do, creating, creating hope and progress for Barstow and beyond. I'd like to take a few more moments to acknowledge the incredible leadership we have had and we have here in Barstow. I have been fortunate to have worked with city manager Dr. Hart, as well as city manager Willie Hopkins Jr. With their leadership, they have laid the foundation for most of the progress we see here today. Their dedication to this city has been unwavering and I'm grateful to have, have worked with these two fine leaders as they have paved the way for what we're experiencing today. Our current manager, incredible man. He's our city manager, police chief, and our public safety director, and he's the one and only Andy Esmond Jr. This man has continued that legacy that's been set forth by our past two city managers with remarkable skill and vision, guidance with his steady hands and a commitment to excellence. Alongside him has been our top building official and fire marshal, Mr. Chris Hallow, as well as our former assistant city manager Cody Compton, who's no longer here. These men have played a crucial role in ensuring the smooth functioning of our city. Together, they represent the best of Barstow and they stand for dedication, leadership, and a new yielding commitment for progress. Now, as we look into the future of Barstow, I am thrilled with optimism. Our newly elected officials will carry the torch of leadership forward. I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to Mr. Tim Silva, who I've known for a long time as our newly elected mayor. Mr. Silva, your dedication and vision will no doubt serve Barstow well as we continue our journey in progress, especially innovation and beyond. Councilman John Tex Williams, I wish you the absolute best and I hope and pray that you discover that coming off as a bully does not represent you well and is not the best of you, because you're a good man and I appreciate what you do and your dedication for inspiring things in Barstow. I just pray that you kind of work on that a little bit. Councilwoman Rose, I encourage you to reevaluate the impact of your words and actions as they can hurt those around you. Leadership demands accountability, humility, and compassion, qualities that I hope and pray that you will embrace and discover. In closing, I would not be here today without the unwavering support of my wonderful family. My mom, I truly miss. To my wife, Melanie, you have stood by me through every trial. Our strength when I needed the most. Your love and belief in me has been my anchor and I am forever grateful for your patience, unwavering loyalty. To my dad, who's present, and to my mom, who's not physically present, but I know she's present, thank you for your wisdom and guidance. You've, you've been my source of strength throughout my life and your encouragement has kept me grounded, even when the challenges seem impossible. To my wonderful children. My children. Amber. Brandon Muir. Lauren and McKenna. I do apologize for all the stuff you guys went through. As me being elected mayor. Please know that I'm a better person. You know, I leave, we leave our hometown, my hometown, my birthplace, better than when I arrived. But more importantly, we've made things better for future generations. I hope you guys all can see through this journey and importance, the one thing I've showed is resilience, service, and standing up for what is right. To my siblings. Debra Jo, Phyllis, Kenneth, Daryl, and I know Steven, even though he's no longer on earth with us, he's present. Your support has meant, your support has meant the world to me. Each of you have been a pillar in my life, reminding me of the strength of family and the importance of staying true to who I am. To all of you, thank you for all the stuff you guys were put through on this journey with me being the first. Your belief in me has given me the courage to overcome each and every challenge. To my PACE and ECB teams, especially Jose, our operations manager and Sergio, our administrator, almost 40 years in business, thank you for your hard work and dedication. You stood through, through this with me through thick and thin and I apologize for all the stuff that you guys were all put through. Just unbelievable. But together, we have accomplished great things. I cannot have done this without your support and I'm proud that we continue to build a better Barstow and a better future for all of us. Side note, Andy Esmond Jr., my friend, my city manager, my police chief, and then some. What I've seen out of you, sir, this past year has been unbelievable. You are a strong leader, you're committed, and I appreciate you. And I'm speaking to you as an engaged member of our city, not as the mayor. Thank you for everything and I appreciate you. As I close this chapter, my dignity is intact, I want those to know, and the results speak for themselves, because history is no mystery. And believe me, justice is served and will be served. To Matthew, State Attorney, continue to serve our city as you see fit. And I'm hoping and praying that our leaders and leadership continue to discover their value on what you bring or don't bring to the table. Councilman Hernandez, AKA The Peacemaker. It's been an interesting two years. Thank you for coming back and thinking of your serve. Mayor Protem. James Noble. AKA The Peacemaker too. You have served as the mayor pro tem for almost four years. And I am honored to have served with you. Councilwoman Rose, I've already spoke. And with this all being said, it's my honor serving Barstow, the residents, my hometown, born here, raised here, educated here. Wow. Thank you all and farewell. That is it. Moving along with the agenda, Ms. Flores?
Yes, our next presentation is for Councilmember Cruz. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Marilyn Dyer Cruz, an outstanding citizen of the city of Barstow, who has always shown a great love for our community, was elected to the Barstow City Council in 2020. And whereas as a city representative, Marilyn also served on the Solid Waste Advisory Task Force, Solid Waste Joint Powers Authority, and the Streets Committee, to name just a few. And whereas during her tenure with the city, Marilyn used her knowledge and experience to fulfill the city's mission to provide quality public service, promote economic development, expand housing, education, and recreation while celebrating our diverse cultural history to create pride in the community. And whereas Marilyn devoted herself to the well-being of the community in which she lives, always showing care and concern and always having the city's best interests at heart. And whereas the commitment Marilyn has shown to the city of Barstow is evident by the number of years she has devoted herself to public service and the courtesy she has extended to fellow council members, staff, and the public. And whereas after four years of faithful and dedicated service to the city of Barstow, Marilyn is now leaving the city council and it is only fitting that she be recognized for giving so unselfishly of herself as a council member. Now therefore, the city of Barstow hereby recognizes and thanks Marilyn Dyer Cruz for a job well done, for her faithful and dedicated service to the city of Barstow and its citizens, and for her part in making Barstow a great place to live, work, and play. And further, we wish her good health and happiness and many hours of laughter and love with her family and friends. Signed and sealed at Barstow, California, the sixteenth day of December 2024." Councilmember Cruz, the mic is yours.
I believe with her silence, perhaps she's not here.
With that, I'll, will accept this proclamation on her behalf and move forward with our agenda.
Right. And I believe agenda item number four, you're also the presenter.
Yes. So at this point, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for, for you, as your last official act, if you could please administer the oath of office to me, please?
Yeah, yes. I'll come out front with the mic. I've seen you do this many a times. I, Dr. Paul Anthony Courtney. Okay. See, I'm just practicing. I, state your name, please.
I, Andrea Flores.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. I remember when we came in office, it was COVID.
What?
Yeah, it was.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. And with that, I'd like to invite our next elected member, Mr. Tim Silva, to the front.
Andy, do you want this?
I, Timothy R. Silva, do solemnly swear. I will, that I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. And that I will. Bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservations. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will. Well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Upon which I'm about to enter.
Ms. Rose, please.
I, Barbara Mae Rose. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will.
And that I will. Bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will. Well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Upon which I am about to enter.
If we can have Mr. Tex Williams, please.
I, John Williams. Do solemnly swear. I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. And that I will. Bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution. I take this obligation freely. Reservation. Of purpose of evasion. And that I will. Well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Upon which I'm about to enter.
Ready. I, Michael Lewis. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. And that I will. Bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will. Well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe there was an amendment to the agenda to move council comments next. And before we do that, I'm going to take a one-minute break. I am going to rearrange the dais, District One, Two, Three, and Four. So Councilmember Hernandez, you will stay where you're at. District Two, to my left. District Three, to my right. And District Four, last seat. So hopefully, we can make that permanent, and the districts are now in order. Comments, it says comments only, not committee reports. We'll keep that towards the end, and we'll start with District One, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. And since we're doing business of the council, which would have been later on, my primary concern is the cannabis issue and the smell out there in the Lynnwood area, and the fact that three out of four are out of compliance. And I have asked the city manager for a timeframe to report to the council as to the status of the situation. The next is information for you, Mr. Mayor, on the League of Cities. I was asked by Councilwoman Bishop. The meeting will be on January 10, 2025, and they would appreciate whoever that they attend that, and it will be in Apple Valley. Update on the Street Committee will be done as far as what the projects and the funding on January 22. And that's it. Attended the long walk on December 6. Sports Park, Toy Drive on December 7, and the swearing-in of our two new officers today at this morning. So we have a new female and new male officers, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I should have mentioned, the reason we moved council committee or council comments to the front is so that the newly-installed council members will have a chance to speak to the public. So District Two, Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The Victor Valley Transit Meeting was canceled. Next one won't be until the 21st of January.
Okay, this isn't committee reports. We're going to keep that at the end. This is just council comments. District Three, Councilmember Rose.
Thank you, Mayor Silva. So I want to take this opportunity to say that it's been an honor to service Councilwoman for the city of Barstow for the past four years. Words cannot fully express my gratitude for entrusting me with the responsibility of serving as a councilwoman for the next four years, representing District Four, District Three. Your support and encouragement means the world to me. I take this oath seriously of being truthful and just, and I will do everything within my capacity in making our city even a better place to live, work, and raise our families. I would like to thank God for his never-ending grace and continued blessings. My greatest blessings is my incredible family. I would like to thank my family for their unconditional love, for believing in me and for supporting me in everything I choose to do. As a family, we rely on each other's positive energy and helpful guidance, which we need when we need it the most. I am grateful for each and every one of you that are here this evening, and for those that cannot be here, and for everything you have done for me and continue to do. I love you. I have achieved a lot in my life, but among my notable achievements, I consider nothing to be greater than my role as being a mother to my wonderful children, Amanda, Candace, and Austin, who happens to be serving in the U.S. Navy, and a nana to five wonderful grandchildren, Alyssa, Bryson, Bronson, Roden, and baby Carter. To the moon and back is how much I love you. I want to wish our outgoing Mayor, Mr. Courtney, and our outgoing Councilmember Cruz well. May God bless you and your families. I also want to congratulate and welcome our incoming Mayor, Mr. Tim Silva, and our newest council member, John, Mr. John Tex Williams. I look forward to working together for the next four years. Let's keep this energy going and work side by side for the betterment of our city and our residents, lest we remember that each voice matters in making our democratic process stronger and in creating a better Barstow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rose. And District Four, Councilmember Williams.
First of all, I want to thank my family. My campaign manager, Molly Williams, Vanessa Pack, thank you so much. I know I was a handful. I know I didn't listen, and I appreciate all of the expertise you guys gave me. To the people, I promise you transparency. I promise you honesty. I guarantee you that's what you're going to get. To everybody in this room, I'm going to offend or make mad very soon. Take that apology now. It's not personal. What I will do is make sure that this city understands what is going on. It's your right. It is our responsibility to work for you, to inform you, and to give you everything we can to make sure you know what's happening inside of your city. This doesn't belong to us. It belongs to you. It's your money. It's your staff. It's your popo. Thought you'd like that one. You know, for those I've hurt, those who I've made mad, you know, I apologize. I'm not perfect, never will be. I only know one way to attack the issues. I've been doing this for 40 years as a football coach, one way. So for everyone who voted for me, I thank you. For those who did not vote for me, I work for you. Thank you for everything you guys have done. I love this city.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I too want to start with thanking my family. They sacrificed quite a bit from the first time I ran in 2006. At that time, my son was not even one. He got a vote for me this time, and my daughter was five. She's voted for me this time in my prior election. So thank you to my family, my wife, Kim, my son Tristan, my daughter Taylor, her husband, Chris. I see my nephew here. Thank you. I see another nephew, John, his wife, April, back there. And did I miss anybody in the family? I hope not. My brother. My brother's back there somewhere. Thank you, Lorenzo. I come from a large family, but they're spread out now, so the brothers all could not be here. I thank my God always, and the pastor that spoke this evening, Pastor James, is the pastor of my church, St. Joseph's. The reason I moved this to the front is I want to explain a few things about how the meetings are going to be run. They haven't been run properly, and we sometimes get into, well, that's the way we've done it in the past, and then eventually, the person comes along that says, we're not going to do that anymore. I'm that person. We're going to run these meetings by the rule of order. One person at a time will have the floor. Now, the one power I have above the rest of the council members here, because I'm one vote, just like them, is I do run the meeting, and they will be done by the rules of order. When the person has the floor, I will take a backseat. I no longer have the floor, and you decide if someone has the floor with you during discussion or during questions and answer. You decide that. I'm going to demand that all council members respect the staff and respect the public. I'm going to ask that the public respect the council. I can't demand it of them because of the First Amendment, but I think if we respect them, eventually, respect will get returned to us. I'm going to require that we use proper titles. That's going to be hard for me. I may want to call the interim city manager, Andy, but it will be Mr. interim city manager or Mr. Espinoza. The city attorney will be legal counsel or city, or Mr. Matthews. Mr. Summers, sorry. I had Summer Matthews, okay. And the rules of order that we will abide by are as follows. I will announce the agenda item with the exception of consent. I'll continue to let the city clerk announce the consent calendar. I will announce who will be presenting from staff the item, and I will read the recommended action item. We will then go to council questions, and this will be questions only. I will stop you if you try to put opinions and discussion into questions. We are not discussing prior to a motion. After questions, we'll go to public comment, and the public will have three minutes. We will not change that for their public comment. This will be your three minutes. If you ask a question, it will not be addressed during your three minutes. It's your three minutes to speak, and I recommend you take all three minutes. They go very fast. After public comment, we'll come back to the council, and we'll go back to council questions. Something the public said may have driven you to come up with another question, or you may address. You may say, well, Mr. Hernandez had a great question. I would like for staff to answer that question. The public and the staff will not be in direct conversation with each other, but the council can take a good question from the public and ask the staff to answer it. After we are done with questions, then I will ask for a motion, and then I will ask for a second. I will announce who made the first, who made the second, and I will ask the clerk to read it back. If it's motion to approve as is, she may say that. If there's been any addendum or anything changed, I'll ask her to read it back as changed, so that we're clear on what we're voting on and the public's clear on what we're voting on. Now we'll go to discussion. There will be no discussion prior to a motion. A motion and a second is what puts the item here at the dais. It's not here. There's no need for us to discuss it. There's no need for us to put our opinion out about it if we don't have a first and a second to bring it to the dais. The city interim city manager may bring us something we don't want to vote on, something like, let's paint City Hall pink, and we're all going to sit here and say, I don't want a motion for that. But I sure would like to discuss it and tell them how silly that is. In that case, I'll entertain a motion for discussion, in which case, we will discuss the item, but again, it's still not at the dais. We will not vote, and it could go away without a vote. So that is the rules of order. That's how it's going to be run, and I will be sure that it is run that way. If someone feels I'm wrong, they may call a point of order. I will honor the point of order, but you must get a second for that point of order, and then the council will vote if I was correct or if the council member's correct. We will respect each other. If you call a point of order, I will stop and I will listen. In the past, we have had substitute motions. I will allow, if there's a motion, then we can do a, we've called them substitute motions. You can use that or substitute. I will allow up to three motions at the dais at a time, and then we'll have to vote before we'll take a fourth motion. They will go in order of the third. They will go in order of the third motion. If it does not pass, we'll go to the second. If it does not pass, we'll go to the first. If we're down to the first and we're not passing, then we can entertain another fourth motion. But that's the order that the motions will go in. I believe that's all. So with that, we're gonna go on to the consent calendar. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on all matters on the consent calendar. Speakers are asked to limit their comments on all consent items to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. City clerk, will you please read the items on the agenda, consent, I'm sorry, consent calendar?
Um.
None were pulled?
I do have public comment on consents. I believe Mr. Brand.
Would we read them first or public comment first?
We have historically recently had public comment first and then had the clerk read the items. It would not be unlawful to have the clerk read the items and then take public comment and then come back to council.
May we do that? Would you please read them and then we'll first address if council has comment, and then we'll go to public.
So the consent item reads as follows. Item five is the minutes for the special meeting, October 29, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. The recommended action is to approve minutes as presented. Item six, the minutes for the regular meeting held November 4, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. The recommended action is to approve minutes as presented. Item seven is the amendment number two to the fiscal year 2024-2025 publicly available pay schedule. The recommended action is staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution number 51962024 approving the amended publicly available pay schedule, attachment A for fiscal year 2024-2025, with an effective date of December 22, 2024. And that is the end of the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I see no one requesting to ask questions. Okay, I apologize. I do see Councilmember Noble, please ask your questions. Oh, go ahead. Okay, it's, yeah, we haven't switched the, so it's Councilmember Rose.
Thank you. My question is, would it be appropriate to change the name on item number seven on the resolution from the former mayor to the present mayor?
Yeah, that will happen automatically.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Rose, and public comment, please.
Mr. Rodney Brand. He's not in our area, so if you'd like to...
Anybody else?
That was all the comment we had.
Okay. I will call for a motion. I've got a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. I call for the vote.
I'm waiting for a vote, Mr. Mayor.
I forgot to lock.
Thank you. And the motion for consent has passed unanimously.
Okay, we have no deferred items. We'll move on to the public hearing. Now, I forgot to mention this in the public hearing, I will open the public hearing when it's time for the public, not before. So at this time, we have the fiscal year 2025-2026, community development block grants, CBDG allocation for projects. And Mr. Interim City Manager, who's taking this?
I will take this.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez, go ahead.
Good evening. Before you, Mayor and City Council, is the annual request for funding allocation from the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG program. This initiative is administered by the Community Development and Housing Agency of San Bernardino County, which manages the application, submission, and evaluation process. In prior years, this item has been brought to you before in February, but with this upcoming year, the county must prepare a strategic plan, also known as a five-year consolidated plan, which governs the use of federal housing and community development grant funds. It receives from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. For fiscal year 2025-26, the city is projected to receive an allocation of $239,790. Out of this total, 15% can be designated for public service programs, which amounts to $39,969, leaving a total of $203,802 for construction projects. For the city of Barstow, the county received five applications for public services and one for a construction project. According to the CDBG guidelines, the city is allowed to fund up to five public service programs and two construction projects, allowing for a total of seven. The mayor and council are required to recommend and submit the chosen applications along with their corresponding funding amounts to the county by January 7, 2025. These will be presented to the Board of Supervisors in April to finalize the CDBG project funding for '25-'26 program year. As part of the agenda, a copy of the submitted applications are accompanied by a summary of the proposed services. The applicants are here today also to provide additional information on their projects should you have any questions for them. It's also important to know that just because you approve an application this evening does not guarantee funding. As outlined in the application packet, page 15, there is a checklist that requires certain documents that must be submitted to the county. And as noted, I provided a copy also at your seat, and I highlighted, it says that this information is required before any contracts or reimbursements can be completed. And should the applicant not meet the county's requirements, the funds will then be reallocated to the city's on program funding. So that concludes my report, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Before we do that, I already broke my rules of order. I did not state the recommended action by staff. The recommended actions, staff recommends the city council take the following actions. Number one, per CBDG policy, the city council select the construction project in the amount to be awarded. Number two, for CBDG policy, city council selects public service projects and amounts to be awarded, maximum of five projects. Number three, authorize a city manager to execute all necessary forms. And number four, direct staff to submit to the city council project recommendations to this San Bernardino County for consideration by the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors. Do I have any questions from the council? May we have the applicant speak, please?
Our first applicant is New Hope Village.
Good evening. I'll start because I'm the chair of the New Hope Village Board of Directors, but I'm getting over a cold and my throat is not doing well at all, so I'm gonna turn it over immediately to the executive director and thank you for your consideration of our grant proposal.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, Angela Pasco, New Hope Village. Our mission is to provide subsidized housing and supportive services to unsheltered families and individuals in order to empower them to break out of homelessness, food insecurities, and poverty. Our tagline is a hand up, not a handout. It's a program. They have to work the program in order to live there at New Hope Village. And I've invited Rita to share her journey with you.
Hello. My name is Rita Lee, and I am a resident at New Hope Two. And since I've been a resident, I started at New Hope Village, and I have graduated high school. And three days ago, well, actually, on the 12th, I graduated Barstow Community College, and I gained my associate's in psychology. I have been able to rebuild and reconnect with not one, but two children, and all in the comfort of our home. And I like to tell everybody that I meet that California really is cracking down on homelessness, because I would be homeless if I didn't have New Hope Two. And I always like to bring that up, because, I mean, who doesn't like when they see their tax money being put to good use? I'm very grateful for the director, Angela. I have learned a lot of structure, and a lot of people call it a strict program, but I am to a point where I need the structure and to rebuild my life, and I really appreciate the program.
Before you step down, do I have any questions of New Hope from any council members? Thank you.
Our next applicant is Desert Mana, Mr. Eugene.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, everybody that's new on board here. We're looking forward to working with all of you. Darren Fixstad, president, excuse me, here getting over a cold, CEO of Desert Mana the past 15 years. And Desert Mana's been serving the Barstow community for going on 39 years, I believe, Eugene, and that's been everything from emergency shelter to motel voucher programs, permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, food bank, redistribution of food, job training, just a plethora of a number of things. But for this particular grant, I'm gonna turn it over to Eugene, that's been our executive director also, and talk a little bit about our food program and this grant and the purpose of it. Eugene?
Okay, thank you. As far as with the application for the CDBG grant, it is primarily, it goes towards what we call organics, or it's the edible food recovery program. And this is part of a program with California SB 1383. Jessica with, I worked with Jessica, well, when she was with Solid Waste, I haven't met the new person yet. With this particular program, Desert Mana picks up what's called edible food recovery. It's food that would have been, you know, past its best-by date. Supermarkets can no longer sell it, but that does not mean that the food is no longer edible. We, Desert Mana picks up from two out of the three major grocery stores in Barstow, as well as Marine Corps Logistics-based Barstow Commissary and Fort Irwin Commissary as well. And occasionally, Desert Mana's so lucky, the residuals from rotation out of Fort Irwin. Now, this, Desert Mana picks up about seven to eight tons of food on a monthly basis. Desert Mana had gotten into the program originally with a grant from Cal Recycle back in 2018. And as far as for the food that's collected, it's redistributed not only to those at risk hungry within the Barstow community, as far as with the weekly, excuse me, the food distributions from Desert Mana itself, it is also redistributed to various kitchens, kitchens such as New Life Fellowship on Tuesday evenings, and also with help outreach over at Barstow Church of God in Christ that was doing Sunday distributions. We've also, some of the other areas has gone out as far as Newberry, Yermo. So it's not serving just the Barstow area, but also the surrounding communities as well. During the time of the pandemic, we were going as far as Adelanto. For those that may have been familiar with the Farmers to Families Program, in which there were 35-pound boxes that would include dairy, fresh fruit, proteins. For 39 weeks during the pandemic, Desert Mana was receiving 1,000, up to 1,200, excuse me, up to 1,200 boxes on a weekly basis, and that was then redistributed throughout the high desert. And as far as with this particular, with the CDBG grant, the application is that we can continue doing this program. The edible food recovery, some people may refer to it as organics. You know, the city is, has, or will be having a mandate, so much, so many, so much has to be diverted, because if we're not picking it up and redistributing, it would end up in the landfill. So that's part of what we're, part of the whole state program to avoid that. Thank you, unless there's any questions?
Thank you. Yes, is there any questions from council for Mr. Batishi? I see none. Madam Clerk?
Our next applicant is HDCO.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Smith from High Desert Community Outreach. And just to give you a brief summary of what we do, we thank y'all for granting us the grant on last year, when we was able to attain a trailer because of all the products and goods that we give out every weekend. On Saturdays, we spend time with the homeless, we go to them, because a lot of them don't have transportation. And so we have non-perishable items, we give them clothes, you name it. We do that for them, and this year, well, we start off about 20 a weekend, but now we pushing about between 40 to 50 homeless people on Saturdays. And then on Fridays, we are, with support from other, the other community, we have meats and stuff that we give to families. We go out into the different locations, and we give our food to different families. And so with this year grant, we're hoping to get a hold to a vertical deep freeze is one of the things we have, because now we're starting to get in some meats and stuff that we can give to families. So those are the things that we do. We just try to work, you know, with them one-on-one, because they don't have transportation, so we take it to them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Our next applicant is Growing Outreach, Growing Opportunities.
Hello. Hi, everyone. Good to see me. Yeah, happy faces, smiles, right? Okay, I'm with Gogo, I'm the executive director, and a lot of our focus, what we ask for in this grant is support with our outreach services. We target more of the young adults, those living at poverty or at or below the poverty levels. We really want to address the generational poverty that plagues us all in every area. Today, I was at Marshall's, and I seen two guys walk out with hands full of toys. And I'm like, that's a crime. But in reality, it's like, how desperate are you? Like, why are you doing that? Do you not have a job? Are you not working? Like, what is making you feel that this is the reason that, you know, you have to do this? So these are the people that we target. We want to really get to the people who need life skill training. They need job development support. They don't know how to fill out a resume or fill out an application. They don't understand professionalism. They don't understand the basics that you and I would look at and think that, like, just do it. They don't know. So if we don't get to them physically and take them by their hand and show them the way to a successful life, they'll never have it. They'll repeat crime, they'll go to prison. So we're asking for funds that'll increase our effort. So what we do one day a week, we go out and we try to hit high-traffic areas like Food for Less, Walmart, Stater Brothers, the areas where we know people will traffic, and try to get these people to register with us and one, get our case management services, but also attend our workshop, our life skill workshops, our job development workshops. So these funds will actually increase our efforts to a second day, and hopefully, we can make that a weekend day where we can target those who are shopping or around that need our services. So we hope you select us, and thank you for the time. Bye-bye. Thank you.
I see no questions from council. Madam Clerk?
Our last applicant is San Bernardino County Library. They must not be present.
Thank you very much. At 7:23, I now open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes. Our first speaker is Mr. Darren Fixstad.
Darren Fixstad, Desert Mana. Darren Fixstad, Desert Mana. I did have a question. We had put in a grant, a construction grant, 200K and change, something along that line, for a building 209 North First for renovation. And I don't see it listed. And apparently, the county might have had some questions. But we never received a decline or what maybe might have been deficient. Or if they needed any further explanation. However, we think the grant was a very worthy grant. And something the city would certainly, would probably consider as a very viable project, a renovation that works with a couple of nonprofits, investment and working with the city. So we, we have no idea. I notice it's not on the list as a construction project. And if there's anything any of you can get back to me on, nothing from the county. And obviously, the city can't consider it unless it gets to you through whatever means. But would appreciate if someone could let me know. Because I think if you looked at that grant, you would really like it and do something with one of those blight buildings that's sitting in your inventory that you'd probably like to, that would be a good mixed use. So anyway, that's the only thing I had to make a comment on in regards to that. So whoever can get back to me, I'd appreciate it. You all have my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fixstad. We'll see if we can get that addressed when we come back to questions for council.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Our next speaker is Mr. Rodney Brand. He's left. That is all the comments that we have on this.
Okay. I close public comment at 7:25. Do I have any questions from council? Again, this is questions only. Councilmember Rose?
Thank you. So the question that Mr. Fixstad has, do, does the city have an update on that?
Yes, I have the information and I could provide that to Mr. Fixstad. And one of the reasons some of the applications get rejected or denied, it's because they're not an eligible project. If I recall, the project he was trying to do was permanent housing. And the county does not see permanent housing or like an apartment complex as an eligible project. They would have accepted it if it was listed as temporary housing or transitional housing.
Thank you.
I see no more requests to speak. With that, I'll entertain a motion. And just for clarification, this motion does include the construction and the services.
So what you're going to be voting on is, you know, since the amount that the applicants are requesting is higher, higher than what we are allowed, I mean, you can make a motion to distribute the money evenly between all five applicants. And that's something that we can do. And then it would be also the motion to award the construction project for Lilian Park.
Correct. So I'll entertain a motion. And please include in the motion for the service projects how you would like the money distributed.
Mayor Silva, may I motion?
Yes, please.
I'd like to motion to distribute the money evenly. I calculated, it's, actually, I would exclude, it would exclude the county library. But it was, so it would be distributed evenly amongst the four that were here, present, and, and gave us their wonderful proposals to, also to include the construction. And the amount would be a little under 10,000.
Yeah, so the amount, if we distribute it between, yeah, it's, you're looking at about 8,900 per applicant.
I've got a first. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I've got a second from Councilmember Hernandez. Sorry, I heard her first. Madam Clerk, could you please repeat the motion for clarity for the council and for the public?
So I have a motion to approve the city application for $203,822 for the construction project. I have a motion to approve allocating 8,992 to each of the four applicants, New Hope Village, Desert Mana, High Desert Care, and Growing Outreach, Growing Opportunities for the public services applications.
Thank you. With that, I call for a vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, agenda item number nine, rejection of bid for HVAC system at the Coral Harper Community Center. And who will be taking that item? Mr. Hildreth, please. One, I'm sorry. The recommended action items, the staff recommends that the city council take the following actions. Number one, formally reject the bid submitted by Eli Company. Number two, authorize staff to rebid the project. And number three, authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents to facilitate this process. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hildreth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The item you have before you tonight is a rejection of a proposal from Eli Company that provided a proposal to replace the HVAC system at the Coral Harper Fitness Center. When the city of Barstow sent out the, the project itself, we have two different funding mechanisms. The first one is through CDBG. The second one is, is through the federal government with, it's a, it was COVID money, basically. So we were using those two funds to, to complete this project. Unfortunately, whenever we sent out the bid, we only received three contract companies that were walking the project. And then only one sealed bid is what we received. So we're asking the city council to reject the bid as it came in extremely over budget. And the, the electrical engineering company and the, and the mechanical engineer, they do, they did the plans for this project. And in addition to it, they do engineers' estimates for this project. With that, what they, their estimates were a little bit more than what the city had budgeted. However, it was significantly less than what the bid that came in on. What we've determined, or what we've thought from the bids, the bid that we did receive is that they were the only company that was interested when we were really doing the job walk. And whenever they were doing it, they really weren't interested in doing the project either. And their price showed a significant amount over budget. They did a breakdown and they showed us the pricing and itemized it out so that we can compare. And there's some things that have some extreme markup on it. And so what we would like to do is reject the bid, we're asking council to reject the bid and to go back out to bid. We've already spoken to multiple other HVAC companies that weren't aware that we were bidding the project. And they've all showed interest in, in asking us, once we do get the approval, to notify them directly so that we can have those companies come out and provide, do the job walk and then also do the, the bidding. And with that, I will continue. Questions?
Okay, I have Councilmember Noble. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned that it went out for bid and we only had three this, this time with the one that we're gonna reject if, if approved. However, if we send this back out, how long are we gonna send it out for? And do we anticipate a bigger number of population that will apply for it?
Yeah, so we, we've already, we would send it out and our estimated time is that we want to send it back out for bid in, in middle of January. We've already spoken to multiple HVAC companies on, on trying to drum up some interest in bidding it. We've also, because the way we usually send them out to bid is you send it to plan rooms. And that hasn't been working for us lately. So we, I was talking to the city engineer, Mr. Merrill, about some other ideas that we can drum up some more interest in, for people to provide, do the job walk and then also provide a bid. The other thing that we're going to be doing is, we didn't have it available at the time. What we do now is, the mechanical engineer that designed the system actually has it in full 3D. There's this program that they utilize that it shows it all in 3D. And they can do their, their takeoff right from that. The mechanical engineer is also gonna do the, the takeoff, which, whenever I say takeoff, what contractors do is they come in and they look at the plans and then they have to sit there and spend their time itemizing out every single piece of material that they have to buy for that job. What we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead and provide that takeoff for them because the computer program generates it. So that will save them time and it'll be more attractive for them to bid on the, on the project. So that's, that's what our, our hope is, is that we do get multiple other contractors. And we would like to, we would like to fly it in the middle of January. And we do it per the Public Contracting Code for the, for the amount and then that process.
I know you mentioned that there were some itemized items that were probably a little, by the other company that was a little high, maybe out of range. What are we gonna do to mitigate that for the next bid?
So the idea is, is to utilize that program that, that's gonna itemize out all the material takeoffs. So sometimes, if the plans aren't designed 100% accurately, contractors have to make assumptions. Well, assumptions come at cost. So they, they assume something and then they, they add on to it just to make sure they cover themselves. So we intend to answer majority of those questions, everything we know that is out there, and build that into the plan. So that's how we plan on lowering the cost potentially.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Next in the queue, I have Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. And my question is, when is Coral Harper actually gonna be usable?
So when the system went out, I don't recall. I wasn't in charge of that section whenever it happened. But it's been down for quite some time. I can announce, though, that we, we did get it back up and running. And then what ended up hap, obviously, it's cold in there. But the hospital start, we're having a Christmas party up there. And we worked with their maintenance department. They're gracious enough to come over and look at it with us. And we actually got the heaters all working again. So the heat is working in the Coral Harper. That gym is getting the floors resurfaced currently because there was some damage to the east side of the court. And that is getting repaired as we speak. They started last, I think this, on Monday. So they're, they're already in there sanding it all down. And they're gonna be putting new paint down and fixing that, the damage. And I believe that it's supposed to be opened back up at the first week of January. And the heat works now, so we're gonna be able to use the facility like normal once the courts get resurfaced. And then we need to get this project completed before the summer months.
So we, the rejection actually needs to be done ASAP?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Next in the queue, I have Councilmember Williams.
What did they do to make it work? What, what was the collaboration between the two of, of the community hospital and us that got the system started again?
So Sam, their, their facilities director, he, they have different mechanical technicians that work on their facility. Contractors, then they're not just staff members. They, since they wanted, they really wanted to have their Christmas party there in the warm, they, they had their technicians come out and, and look at the system. We received a diagnosis from, a diagnosis from local vendors. And whenever this vendor came out, they replaced the unit itself and got it up and operating. So basically, the Barstow Community Hospital is to thank for their maintenance facilities director having the connection with the HVAC company, who also is interested in bidding the project now. And, and that's how we're able to get it open.
The last question is, if it's up and running, is it gonna stay up and running?
It'll stay, well, if it don't break. But it, it should be staying open until the summer months before it gets too hot. But we're hopeful to have the, once the project starts, we're gonna be closing sections of it down, yes. But right now, at the, whenever the, the court gets resurfaced, that court or that, that gymnasium will be fully open. And right now, I think the weight room and stuff is still open. But the gym part is, or the basketball court is closed. So once that gets resurfaced, then it'll be entirely open again.
Maybe we should have the hospital bid on the project.
Thank you. Just one question, Mr. Hildreth. I see in the fiscal impact, there is no impact because it'll be reimbursed by CBDG. What was the amount approved when they approved that CBDG funding?
I don't, yeah, I don't have the exact dollar amount. But the CDBG is two different funding sources, CDBG and the, the COVID money. They're both coming from the county. But there will, what was that? It was three. Yeah, it, it all totaled up to $530,000 was, was the, the amount of the COVID money and CDBG funds.
So there'll be no delay. We'll fund it, general fund and then reimburse CBDG? So there'll, no delay due to funding?
Well, the intentions are, is that we are gonna go out for bid. And then whenever we get the bids back, there will be a potential that we are gonna be asking the city to come up with additional funds based off of what the prices come back from the, the contractors. I have been told by the mechanical engineer, because we, the systems that we have in that Coral Harper are 30, 30-plus years, I think, is, if not more, old. The ROI, if we were to fund the entire project without using CDBG funds or COVID money, their, their ROI on that project was seven years. If we were to fund it completely ourselves, the city. So I will bring back, once, once I get the bids, I will bring back an analysis of what we'll be asking for and where we'll be asking it from. And then also what the ROI on what the city's portion would be of us having to put in.
Okay, thank you. I have Councilmember Rose in the queue.
I do have one question. So we just awarded construction from the new grants tonight. Could that, could there have been a bid from the city for, an award for the Coral Harper to, to add towards this?
So the city does have unprogrammed funds inside CDBG. Same thing with the Lilian Park project that you just approved. We believe that there's gonna be additional unprogrammed funds after that project. So we do have an opportunity to use unprogrammed funds as well to cover some more of the city cost. We were hoping, from the mechanical engineers, engineers estimate, we were hoping that we were gonna be a lot closer than, than what came back. And so what we want to do is, once we get the, the new bids and we wanna, we will have a little more time to ask CDBG to, to give us the unprogrammed funds as well, additional unprogrammed funds to transfer over for the project.
Do you have any idea how much those are?
The ones, right now, it's $93,589.91 is the unprogrammed funds that are currently sitting in there.
Thank you.
I see no more requests to speak. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests from the public to speak?
We have no comment on this item.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move.
I second and...
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Hernandez, a second from Councilmember Rose. Is there any discussion? Please enter into the queue if you wish to discuss. Seeing no discussion, I call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously to approve as presented.
Item number 10, an introduction of ordinance adding section 1.01.240 to chapter 1.01 of Title I of the Barstow City Code establishing administrative remedies procedures for challenges to fees, charges, and assessments. The recommended action by staff is, it is recommended that staff, that the city council introduce and waive the first reading of this ordinance adding section 1.01.240 to chapter 1.0 of Title I of the Barstow City Code establishing an administrative remedies procedure for challenges to fees, charges, and assessments. Attachment Exhibit A ordinance, I don't have the ordinance number, to establish the administrative remedies procedures to challenges to fees, charges, and assessments. Who will be presenting? Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, before you is a proposed ordinance that would establish a new requirement for anyone seeking to challenge a fee or a charge protected by Proposition 18 to file a written objection in advance, or rather, before the end of the public hearing on that fee stating their detailed objections to the fees. This takes advantage of new state law, Assembly Bill 2257, that takes effect January 1st of next year, that would allow, if cities adopt by ordinance, this additional tool to require opponents who may wish to challenge a Prop 218 fee, examples of which are the city sewer fees and landscape maintenance district fees, who wish to challenge those fees to have... fees, to have filed their written objections in advance before filing such a lawsuit. It also requires the sort of the carrot and stick, in return for that, to also have a detailed procedure set for how the proposed fees or charges will be made available to the public, including a 45-day period for any property owner or fee payer who objects to a fee, to have that opportunity to submit their objections, and then for timely responses to be filed by the city to any written objections as filed. With that, we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions from counsel for the city attorney? Seeing none, ma'am clerk, do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have no comment on this item.
Okay, I'll bring it back and presume there's still no questions. I'll call for a first and a second.
I'd like to move.
I'll second.
I've got a first from Councilmember Noble, a second from Councilmember Rose. The motion is to approve as presented. Call for the vote.
No discussion?
I'm sorry, discussion, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is my concern. This is just an other way for the property owners to have less voice, because they have made it more difficult to object. You have to put it in writing, and you have set rules. So I know it's the law, but I think the public should also be aware that it's something that is tying our hands when it comes to increasing fees. We can do it for sewer, and it's becoming more difficult for the public to reject those fees. So that, that's my only comment.
Thank you. Do we have any more discussion or comments? I'll call for the vote.
Motion has approved, four with one no vote from Ms. Councilmember Hernandez.
Okay, that moves us on to item number 11. Approval of an animal shelter agreement between the city of Barstow and the Barstow Humane Society. Staff's recommended action, staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed animal sheltering service agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Attachment A, animal shelter service agreement attached. Presenting...
I'll take this one, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what you have before you today is a contract for the Humane Society. Following the council's direction several weeks ago, for staff to make a reevaluation of all the bids that we received, to include the Humane Society, Spec Pro, and even the feasibility of our city operating its own animal shelter, we conducted several meetings and reevaluated each bid. Tonight, we proposed and selected the Barstow Humane Society. The city and Barstow Humane Society collectively drafted a term sheet and used those collaborative points to negotiate and draft a proposed animal sheltering services agreement, which is Exhibit A, which sets forth the proposed terms and conditions under which Barstow Humane Society would provide animal sheltering services to the city. California requires that cities and counties provide animal control and sheltering services for the purposes of ensuring the safety of people and animals, proper care and temporary housing for lost, abandoned, or neglected animals, maintaining rabies control and prevention programs, licensing domestic animals, and similar services. There are several ways local jurisdictions meet these requirements. Some public agencies manage their own animal shelters and animal control services, two different components, while others partner with nonprofit organizations or other entities for animal control and/or animal sheltering services to take advantage of economies of scale that reduce cost. The city has decided to partner with Barstow Humane Society because of its long history of providing animal sheltering services for the city in the past, as well as its understanding of the willingness to meet the city's animal sheltering needs. Initially, city staff had reservations regarding the conditions of the Barstow Humane Society's facilities. Following several meetings where those concerns and issues were discussed, the city proposed funding options that could assist with certain capital improvements. The Barstow Humane Society's willingness to accept the funding conditions and to make the necessary improvements resolved our staff's concerns. The animal sheltering services agreement only concerns sheltering services. The city of Barstow will provide animal control services for the city. An executed animal sheltering services agreement allows Barstow Humane Society to provide the city with animal sheltering services. An overview of the key terms inclu- I'm sorry, an overview of the key terms include the following components. While Barstow Humane Society makes capital improvements to its facilities, it will provide animal sheltering services to the city at a rate of $211.50 per animal. Once the capital improvements have been made, the city will pay Barstow Humane Society $423,000 per year for animal sheltering services, paid in equal monthly payments. Pay Barstow Humane Society $60,000 per year to fund capital improvements, and that's with a CPI or Consumer Price Index cap of 5%, max 5%. Provide Barstow Humane Society with $310,000 line of credit with an interest rate of 0% and a repayment term of 60 months. Barstow Humane Society's repayments will be deducted from the city's payments for animal sheltering services. A promissory note concerning the line of credit will be entered into the parties at a future date. Barstow Humane Society will remit to the city all animal services fees under the agreement exception for adoption fees. Once all the capital improvements have been made, the term of the agreement will be for five years, with an option for the parties to renew the agreement for one additional term of five years. Either party may terminate the agreement within 180 days with prior written notice. The scope of their services include impounding and caring for domestic and wild animals delivered by the city, providing adoption and redemption services, having all dogs and cats sterilized prior to adoption, sheltering up to 2,000 animals per year, based on best practices data that we have over the last five years for the city of Barstow, maintaining regular business hours, allowing the city after-hour access for animal drop-offs, maintaining records of all animal services provided, and providing monthly statistics of the animals that were taken in by the shelter at the time of building, and allowing the city to conduct monthly inspections of the animal shelter, to ensure that the proper capital improvements have been met. Payments to the Barstow Humane Society under the proposed animal sheltering services agreement would be within the existing budget for such services. The city also expects that the net cost of animal shelter services to the city will be less than the cost if we were to contract with Spec Pro pursuant to its bid, its last and final bid, and less than the cost of continuing to receive services from the Route 66 animal shelter. That is the contract before you tonight. We're available if you have any questions.
Do I have any questions from counsel? Councilmember Rose?
So my first question would be, what is the cost that the police department or the city, what will that cost be for animal control services?
The animal control services fully burdened cost, if we have two animal control services and we purchase another truck, would be... But that would not be how we propose moving forward within the next six months. The contract, if approved by the council, would be prorated or would be fulfilled for the six months remaining in this fiscal year. So for animal services, we have a truck already. So we would propose that we hire one animal control officer at this time, so that the city of Barstow has provided some type of service in that area. And then we would wait until the next fiscal year, where we can reevaluate how much that cost is gonna be, and add a second one if needed.
And so the $234,110, where, what budget is that going to be proposed to come out of?
Well, we don't propose that, we're doing that at this time. For the next six months, we only propose hiring one animal control officer at $60,000, and that would still remain in the budget that we have right now.
So moving forward, because we need to think long-term, where, where do you believe that the budget will pay for the animal control services?
Oh, the general fund. It's the general fund budget.
And would that be general fund? Because Measure Q comes out of general fund, would it just be general fund, or are we looking at Measure Q funds?
No, no, we're looking at Measure Q funds.
My other question would be, in the actual resolution, and it's on page, package, page 171 and/or page number two of the actual agreement, it's not the resolution, Animal Sheltering Services Agreement, page two, 4.6, holding periods. Can you please define this? Because it says animals impounded into the shelter pursuant to this agreement are held a minimum number of business days in compliance with local and state laws. What does the holding period entail? And is there, does this have anything to do with euthanasia?
The holding period, it means exactly that, that the Humane Society is obligated to hold it pursuant to current state law. We have left that all up to the Humane Society. They are determining those, the care of the animals. We are paying for the care of the animals, they're determining the policy in which those holds are applied to the dogs or any of the animals that come in. But the requirement is to stay within all state laws.
Thank you.
Next, I have Councilmember Williams.
First of all, I'm against any of our tax money be given away, but saying that the safety of the public is important. I will take you back to a lady who made a comment a while back, where she was walking her dog and it was attacked, and she had to run into the ER as she was getting bit and her dog died. The fact that we're in this situation is another issue. I'm concerned with us shutting down the Humane Society in the first place. We created this problem.
Councilmember Williams, is this leading to a question?
Yeah.
Please get to it.
The question's gonna, is what would be the cost of that, as far as I'm concerned, is negligence? We put the problem out there, now we gotta solve it. What is that cost of someone getting hurt or someone being attacked to the city versus the value of what this contract is?
I'm not sure I'm understanding the question.
So the value of this contract is more important than the risk that we have to our citizens. The risk to our citizens and the risk to our city is a really big issue. What is, what do you, what is the savings, or what do you think that that could, maybe the city attorney can get into it, but what is, what is the reason why we have to do this, and what's the cost?
I'm not sure we can actually quantify it, but there is a serious, there is laws that I read earlier that require the city to provide these services, and if we're not providing those services and something happens, then...
There's risk of liability. Liability is not certain, but there's certainly a risk of it. If a dog bite case were to occur and someone were able to prove in a court that the city had more partial or full responsibility for that, that could be quite substantial. Those kinds of injury cases can be easily in the millions. We have some defenses, and we're not litigating a case right now, but those costs could be in the millions. So it would seem to me that solving that problem by having a strong functioning shelter service will significantly reduce potential liabilities.
Absolutely. Yeah, what concerns me more than that is that, I, no one wants to give taxpayers money away. And no matter what we do, win or lose here, the benefit and the safety of the public is what's...
Councilmember Williams, does that lead into a question?
Yes, it is. And that is also gonna make sure that the amount of money that it costs us in the future for not having it is a problem. So, I'm good.
Councilmember Hernandez?
I don't like when it says future date for promissory notes. I would like to see something more specific in there. If it's, has to do with our agreement on this item, but there should be a specific timeframe. The other thing is, an explanation to the public for the zero interest loan. I would like, I think that needs to, that's a question the public would have, how can we do that and how can we justify? So that's my question on that. And my other question is, what are we currently doing now? In regards to the public safety and this animal control issue, and that's it.
Go ahead. Yes, sir. The first question, I'm sorry, ma'am, what was the first question? The promissory note, we can change, we can, we can define that a little bit better in there of when that's gonna happen. I think is what your concern is about the date in there. Who's doing services now as far as animal control services? Those officers right there are the main people that go out for animal control right now. I was surprised to see how many calls had come in in the last six months that the officers have responded to. As far as sheltering services, we have now transferred all our sheltering services as of Monday, the 9th, to Barstow Humane Society. We've entered into an emergency agreement to pay for the $2150, yes, ma'am, per animal. Oh, I'm sorry, the 0% loan, huh? The problem, okay, so the issue there is that what staff had a problem with was this amount of money and giving it without no assets. I've always said that. We're entering into agreements with large amounts of money, and the city of Barstow has no assets to fall back on. Here, they're actually constructing our kennels on their property, and we're partnering with them. So we are actually giving them the money to build our kennels, but they're ours. They're the city of Barstow kennels. So it seemed reasonable to give them, the interest loan is 0% because they're our kennels, they're doing that service for us, but then they're going to pay that loan back out of the $51.67, out of the $40,000 we paid them, we pay for their services every month. So when they bill us, we're gonna take the $51.67 out for that $310,000 loan. And we felt that because they were so willing to pay that back and enter into this partnership, that it seemed reasonable because they are our shelters. And then when they, when we're done with that, they're gonna continue to provide services, but they're gonna have those shelters, which will still be city of Barstow shelters, but they're gonna run them for us.
Thank you. Are you in the queue? Go ahead, Councilmember Rose.
Thank you. So I have another question. So Route 66 animal shelter, has that contract ended?
Yes, we're, we're, we're done with Route 66 at this time.
So the facility is now empty?
Yes. It's completely empty. It's been clean to their standards, and then our city workers will go in there and do any repairs that we need to do before we turn that back over to Burtec.
And what will the repairs cost to...
I don't know. I'm not sure if we've evaluated it yet, yes.
Will you bring that back to us?
Yes, if you would like to have that information, of course. Once we reevaluate it and we see where we stand with that facility, it didn't look bad, the actual place where the animals were kept, Route 66 did go in there and clean that, didn't look terrible, but I don't know what the cost would be at this time.
And my follow-up question, or another question, would be, when would this go into effect?
Well, if the council approves the contract, it will go into effect tonight. However, it needs to go into effect so that we would be able to enter into the capital improvement and the building process, because... improvement and the building process because it's going to take some time to do that. The actual $40,000 a month that we pay won't go into effect until those, those facilities are built and done and they're providing services for those facilities. Does that make sense? So, we will have, the contract will be approved tonight so that we can provide them the other aspects of this contract so they can build our facilities. That may take up to four months. I think we estimated three to four months. Then, once it's up and running, then they'll start charging us monthly the $40,000.
And my last question would be kind of in line with what Councilman Hernandez had mentioned about the timeframe for the repayment. Is, is that what we were talking about? That you could rewrite those terms? Can you give us a...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I think it was section...
The promissory note, where is it?
Section nine on packet, page 174.
Yes, there's, will we be able to word that, that one so that we have a specific date?
Right. So, right now, it's structured as a 60-month repayment term, which would start when the loan is funded. So, it would be whatever date that they, if approved tonight, it'll take a, whenever they pull the funds, then 60 months thereafter.
So...
I'm not sure if the query request is for a more specific date than that.
Mr. Summers, so that if, if there's a first and a second, we could actually amend it to kind of give that wording that it would commence?
Sure, yeah. The council can revise it if desired.
It could be within 30 days of the contract or within 90 days, something like that.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
I suppose. Then the other thing that's not in the contract is the CPI max at 5%. And then the other question that I had from a member of the council was the, was the automatic term for one renewal of five years?
Which is not automatic. Sorry to jump in.
Yes. Does that help? It's not automatic. So, but after five years, the city will negotiate terms for another contract. So, that, we can, we can amend that too. So, it's not automatic.
Well, it's, the current language is not automatic, but we can make it clear. There have been questions raised by some of the public. Section 6.1.3, renewal term, upon the written agreement of the parties entered into not less than 90 days prior to the initial term expiration date, the term shall be extended for an additional five-year period. That's already optional, but I understand there's been questions raised, so we can simply state it. If the parties agree, the contract shall be renewed for such term as agreed by the parties. Simpler.
My last question is, is the Humane Society in agreement of what's presented to us this evening? And are we going to hear from them this evening?
You are going to hear from them this evening. And with all the meetings that we've had, I think it's been a really positive collaboration and we are in agreement for them to provide that level of service that the city needs for, for this new animal shelter.
Thank you.
The other, just another point is that it's hard to draw debt. It's a line of credit. So, they're going to draw down certain money to get to where they need to be for those. So, that's why it's hard to charge them those 40 a month because they're just drawing down on, the whole 310 is not going to be all at once. And that's why working with Cindy and Chris is that we looked at everything that we're going to need for six months to get through the contract, for six months. And then our obligation would start July 1 of the full fiscal year. Just wanted that, you to know that as well.
Thank you. I've got Councilmember Noble in the queue.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Just a quick question on the scope of services. And we talked about the maintaining the regular business hour. Who's going to determine the business hours for that? And are we talking weekends also, on-call, off-call, things of that nature as well?
The, the on-call stuff for the animals, so there's two different sections. This is just the sheltering, which I'll try to find their, I'm going to try to find the hours on here real quick. But the on-call part will be city staff because that'll be our own animal control officers. So, there will be no requirement for them to have on-call staff. The, our, our animal control officers or the police department will have a gate code to be able to go to their facility if it's at 2:00 in the morning, drive in, drop off some animals, and then put them in the cages that are designated for, for those animals. And then they would lock, you know, drive back out of the gate. So, the only on-call services or anything would be city employees. And I'm trying to find their...
If I could jump in, the hours are on packet page 185, section 5, Tuesday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturdays, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then with a closure on Sundays, Mondays, and holidays, New Year's Day, Christmas Day, Thanksgiving, and the Fourth of July.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then the last question, you mentioned that we're going to conduct those monthly inspections and stuff. Who's, who's going to do that? Is that someone from our staff?
Yes, sir. It's going to be, it's going to be a code enforcement officer who is familiar with the things that needed to be fixed, along with one of the community development inspectors. And we're going to do that monthly.
And the, the reason why is also, in addition to, I know Mr. Espinoz explained it a little bit, but we, we want to maintain our, our investment as well. So, we don't want to have them build the facility and then it starts to deteriorate. So, we want to maintain the facility and we want to do those inspections to make sure that we, you know, there's peeling paint, let's, let's fix the peeling paint. So, that's, that's what the monthly inspections will be for. And the animal control officer will probably join the code enforcement and building inspector to look at how the animals are, are kept on that side as well. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Before we go on to the public, I have a few questions. The funds for construction, that's just for five years, correct?
Correct.
Because I read section eight, unless I read it wrong, it tells me it will reoccur if we renew the contract. So, section eight, capital improvement payment, city agrees to pay society $60,000 per year, each year of the contract, including the initial five-year term and an additional five-year term if the renewal occurs. Am I reading that wrong?
No, yes, correct.
That's correct. But that's where we want to clear up the language because it makes it seem like it's automatic and then you're automatically going to get that. And that's, that's what Councilmember Hernandez's concern was as well.
The question would be, if we renew, then there is going to be a second note?
Well, so the, the initial, the initial 310 is the one-time 0% line of credit. Then we are proposing a $60,000 capital improvement projects for every year.
Excuse me just a minute. Councilman Hernandez, one person at a time, has the floor. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So, you're reading it correctly. It, it, no matter what, we were, we were stating that it would be a $60,000 per year capital investment from the city to maintain the, the facility, the cages and all that.
So, the way we're going to rewrite it tonight, if I understand, is we will end it with that but negotiate it in the next contract if we renew? Okay. I want to hear that in the motion.
Correct.
And then in section 10.7, I'm doing the calculation, and I did it a few times to be sure. So, it's, it's 310. But we're stating in section 10.7, on the promissory note repayment, 59 payments of $5,167 and one payment of $5,147. And three times on my calculator, that came to 309,730. Not 310. It's, it's a few hundred dollars, but would that be a gift of funds if we didn't give back that?
Well, no, we need to make sure that it adds up, it adds up correctly, sir.
Yeah, that goes back to the fact that the promissory note hasn't been written yet. We didn't expend the resources to write it unless it was approved by the council. And when it is written, the math will be confirmed if approved.
Okay. And in section 12.1, contract meetings with the staff, I would like to have a couple of council members in there. We are the ones accountable to the public. Past council has really been beat up on this. While there has been reduced services out there, and I would like for the council to be kept current by attending those meetings. At least one council member, if not two. Sorry. And...
No, the monthly.
Somewhere in there, and I'll try to find it. You put scheduled inspections. Now, if you schedule an inspection with my office, it's going to pass. So, is there a way the inspections can just be unscheduled? Is this, we're going to pop in there and do an inspection?
Well, we, we actually considered doing that. The thing was that we have specific violations or specific things that they're working on. And it's not a secret. We, we've told them what they need to fix. This is what needs to be done. So, we need to come and check and make sure it gets done.
So, so by the inspections, you're referring to the construction, not inspecting the service? Is that correct?
No, the construction inspection's on them. We're talking about the services. We're talking about everything that they've agreed to in the contract and everything of the building improvements, the capital improvements that they make, whether they are abiding by some of the things we have there, two dogs and a kennel, all those things, those are inspections.
Yeah, and I did, I did find that it is for, to be sure they're meeting the minimum standards of sheltering the animals. So, again, if you schedule that, I can guarantee you I'm going to pass the inspection. So, should the inspections be scheduled or should they be unannounced?
In the negotiations that we had, we did not, we did not announce that we were just going to pop in. We scheduled that we would be out. You know, we, we really didn't put a timeframe. We just, we, we were going to notify them monthly on the month at which day we'd be coming out.
Okay. My thought is, is they're open from, what, Tuesday to, Tuesday to Saturday? I would figure that we would notify them on Tuesday. We're coming tomorrow on Wednesday to, to look at your facility.
Okay. Thank you. I see no one else requesting to speak. Ma'am Clerk, do we have any requests from the public?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Ms. Teresa Tank.
Thank you, Ms. Tank.
Teresa Tank. Good evening, council and staff. First off, the city really needs to hire a proofreader going over all documents to avoid duplicated sentences or unfinished paragraphs. In the discussion part of the agenda, one of the many problems I had is the first sentence under the background states, California requires that cities provide AC and shelter services, ensuring the safety of people and animals. One would think, if this was a requirement of both the state and Barstow's own municipal code, the previous council, CM, staff, and city attorney would have made it more of a priority, especially after the city attorney has stated not having these services raises a risk for the city. And we found out last meeting that there is pending litigation. And yet, I'm still not seeing any mention about animal control in tonight's proposal, except that it would be provided by the police department, which is odd because the CM has stated before that there was no way that the police could do this job. Will code enforcement run AC in the interim? When will animal control officially start? All we've heard from the CM in the past six months is that BHS cannot fulfill the needs of the city. He went even, he even went as far as to say that if he sent his code enforcement down there, that they would shut the Humane Society down. Instead of working with BHS six months ago, the CM doubled down and came up with a new plan for the city to create and run its own department. Because the city has once again put itself in a bind, BHS is now acceptable to at least run the shelter side. Lots of time and money has been wasted by the city to come full circle and put the Humane Society back in charge. It has also been previously stated that the city asked for $175,000 out of the pot fund to move modulators from Irwin to increase space at BRTech. Someone let me know today that there's a modular sitting in front of BRTech right now. How much did it cost the city to move it there? Where did the money come from? And what are the plans for it now that the city isn't doing its own shelter? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tank.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. I have two questions, well, I have a few questions. One is, are you going to give them $60,000 a month or a line of credit for $310,000? Is it the same thing or are they two separate issues? Are you going to give them $60,000 to do improvements and then add on another $310,000 line of credit? I'd like to see that clarified. Is it one or the other? Is it the same thing or is it two separate issues? My next item would be, the city PD is going to be picking up the animals. What is the cost of that to the city? The city manager said $60,000. But if they're on call, they'll get paid time and a half. And does that include their retirement and the benefits that are given besides salary? Because if you have a, a salary officer taking care of that, he not only gets his salary, he gets benefits. Is that included? I'd like to see a cost allocation done to find out the actual cost of what the city's paying to use staff and vehicles. Because if you use a truck, who's paying for the gas? Are they paying for it or are we paying for it? It doesn't say anything there. I just think that there should be a better clarification of how public money's being spent and more accountability by the council to the public of how you're spending this money. And you need a better explanation of what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Our next speaker is Ms. Cindy Frainey. Cindy Frainey. My apologies.
Welcome, Ms. Frainey.
Thank you. Cindy Frainey, Barstow Humane Society Board President. For the past several months, the Barstow Humane Society has been working with the city of Barstow to not only restore a bond, but also to implement services for animal care back to our community and its animals. Past meetings have identified the community's issues and desires. These meetings have also identified needs, resources, and expectations of not only the Humane Society and the city, but also the community we serve. With the Humane Society being responsible for the care, feeding, and adoption of the animals, and the city soon to be handling the animal control and enforcement of associated animal control laws, codes, regulations, we will be able, we will be, I'm sorry. We will better be able to serve the citizens and animals of Barstow. We're, we at the Barstow Humane Society is looking forward to this partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Frainey.
Our, our next speaker is Mr. Jim Brown.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Jim Brown, Barstow. I was just a little confused of is the, when you have this money going to the, to the Humane Society, is it, are they, if you pass this tonight, will they be able to set dogs the next day? That's the question.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And our last speaker on this item is Mr. Perry Pack.
Welcome, Mr. Pack.
Thank you, Mayor, and our revamped city council. I appreciate all of you for your service. I know it's not an easy job. But as I've said before, you signed up for it. So, now it's time to do it. I appreciate our mayor and council and the wonderful things that you will be doing. But I'm wanting to know what you will be doing. And that is, it was already mentioned that if one person were to sue the city for Item 11, that it will be very, very expensive for the city. So I would like to see some real action as far as the city and actual humane and/or great care for the animals and the people of the city through good animal control. Let's say great animal control. And not have something halfway, and then have not only the expense of animal control, but the expense, as the attorney has said, one person getting bitten could cost a million or more. What's that gonna do to our budget? So I say this. Come up with a plan to hit the ground running, not falling down, crawling, or anything like that. A comprehensive plan to hit the ground running. There's been questions, where do the dogs go now? Is the facility ready for them? All those questions should be known and should be answered by the time you guys vote. I appreciate all your hard work, staff included. But we have to hit the ground running. Our people will get harmed. The city, which is the people, will get harmed financially. And God forbid, somebody gets killed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Pack.
That is all the comments we have on this item.
Okay. Before I bring it back to council, I forgot to read the recommended action, even though I believe we're gonna have some amendments on this one. But staff recommends the city council approve the proposed animal shelter service agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Attachments are Exhibit A, the animal shelter service agreement. Okay. Do we have any more questions for staff? Councilmember Rose.
Thank you. I do, I'm gonna go back to the police department that will provide the animal control services for the city. And there's no costs right now, other than what we were told, as far as it could be, it could be $234,110 out of the general fund. And I just wanna make sure that I understood that that would entail hiring an additional officer and an additional truck. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. Our police officers will have nothing to do with this. We're hiring an animal control officer. An animal control officer that's gonna work for the city, pay them $60,000 a year. And we need them to be out there handling dog services calls, everything that Title 8 under our BMC Code handles, they're gonna be handling that. And we will not have, we already have a truck. We purchased a truck back when we had started the feasibility of doing our own. So we have a truck that we got with a good deal. The $234,110 is fully burdened, and we said we are not going to do that. For the next six months, we wanna get through, we wanna, one, provide the service at the most cost-effective way we can. And that way is to hire one animal control officer. The only way it's under the PD is because it seems logical to be under the PD. One, we've always had the budget anyways under there. I've never understood why, but now I see a reason why it needs to be there. One, that animal control officer can respond through dispatch. All of the calls for animal control go through our dispatch center anyways. So it seems very reasonable for us to handle that extra person. One dispatcher, or one person added to our dispatching center is not gonna hurt us. The calls already come in. The difference is, instead of sending a police officer to handle Title 8, we're gonna send an animal control officer, paid by the city, working for the city, to handle all those calls with Title 8.
Thank you for that clarification.
And all under the existing remaining budget that we have.
And so for right now, the animal control services is being done by police officers, so we can, we can say that we do have animal control.
Absolutely. We would never leave the city with a liability like that. And I don't understand why, I mean, I've been saying this from the dais for months, that our patrol officers handle all animal calls. They don't generally, but they are at this time. And throughout my career, I've seen the same thing. I've had to double down, and we've had to handle animal control, because the city always needs coverage. And that's what mitigates liabilities. We always have someone there to respond or to handle those calls. So we've never left, we've never had no services. We've always had services. We're just relying on our police officers to do it, because we didn't have that after the, that resource after the contract ended with Barstow Humane Society.
Mr. Espinoza, what would be the timeframe of actually flying into position for the animal control officer from beginning to end? And the anticipated date, if it is a smooth hiring process?
So we were, we are anticipating flying it right after the holidays for a January to end of February recruitment, in two months. Do our interviews and select somebody, and have them working by March 1st.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no one else in the queue, but just to clarify, Mr. Espinoza, so the officer we'll hire now is falling to the current fiscal year. Which money was budgeted for? Was, I believe that was about $700,000 budgeted this year for animal control? Is that correct?
Actually, we had, for the total for fiscal, we had $952, but we had the truck in there for $100.
Okay.
So that would, really, we were operating off of an $852 budget.
So to clarify, when we talk about two officers and $234, that's gonna be brought in a whole new budget?
A whole new budget. We're trying to get through the next six months in our current budget. We do, we, and the thing is, is that we don't know how the impact will be, because there's a lot of variables of when the, when will the kennels be done? And how many animals do we have right now versus other things? We do, we will bring any adjustments to our mid-year budget review at the beginning of March or end of February, if we need adjustments to get through this. But our goal is to get through the next six months with the existing budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Rose, are you back in the queue? Go ahead.
I am. I do apologize, but I do have one other question, because I, Matthew, can you please clarify, clarify, Mr. Hernandez? I apologize, Mr. Summers. I know. Can you please clarify that the capital improvement payment of $60,000 per year is the line of credit?
No, the current structure is both. So unless the council modifies the proposal, the draft contract is a $60,000 per year capital improvement payment and a $310,000 line of credit. It is structured to be both, if council approves it.
Thank you for that clarification. I was, I was a little confused on this as well, so thank you.
Seeing no one else in the queue, I'm gonna ask for a motion, and there was some discussion regarding amendments, which included a max to the CPI of 5%. Changing the verbiage in 6.1.3 regarding the term. And I didn't get, was there a third item that they discussed amending?
There were a couple, Mayor and Council. So one was, the CPI would be max of 5% per year. Second is that the capital payment in Section 8 would be $60,000 per year for the first five years. And if the renewal occurs, such amount is may be negotiated, if the renewal occurs for the second term, if there is a second term. Section 9 line of credit, that it must be polled within 30, 60 days. I don't think we had a precise figure set there. And then, in Section 6.1.3 regarding the renewal, it would be, at the beginning of the current language, add, if the parties agree, the contract shall be renewed for such term as agreed by the parties. I think that was everything.
Okay. I will entertain a motion. Does any councilmember want to motion with those four amendments to the contract?
I do, and I wanna ensure that all those amendments are correct, and that our city clerk...
Yeah, city clerk, well, may I get a second? Okay, I've got a first from Councilmember Hernandez, a second from Councilmember Noble. And, city clerk, did you wanna read that back, or would you prefer that the attorney read it back?
Mr. Summers read that right back, so I make sure I have the right, as well.
Mr. Summers, would you please read back those four amendments to the contract for the public and the council?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Silva. Section 10.5 set the CPI increase at a maximum 5%. Section 8, the capital payment, set it at $60,000 per year for the first five years. Then the amount is negotiated if the renewal occurs for the second term. And then, for Section 9, the line of credit, it would be, must be polled within 30, 60 days. The initial poll within 60 days. Line of credit, sorry, I'm writing and confirming it as we're going, within 60 days. And for Section 6.1.3 renewal, add, at the beginning of the existing language, if the parties agree, the contract shall be renewed for such term as agreed by the parties. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a first and a second. And do I have any discussion or comments from council? I'm sorry, they took away my screen, so, did anybody? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote.
Motion to approve Item 11 with said amendments passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item number 12, hopefully everyone picked up the amended agenda. Joint item, so I'm gonna also announce that the fire district is also open at this time, along with the council meeting. City Council, Barstow Fire Protection District, Board of Directors, reorganization and selection of committee representatives and alternates. The recommended action, the city council and Barstow Fire Protection Board of Directors are asked to, number one, approve the reorganization of the city council, Barstow Fire Protection District Board of Directors. And number two, determine that committee representatives and alternates establish new committees if needed, and delete non-functioning committees. Okay. I believe this is our item. Is there somebody from staff that wanted to speak?
No, the, well, as you know, with the new council members on board, it's always requested that we at least review all the members that sit on the existing committees. The copy that was provided to you does list all the committees, and you can choose to remove or add any of them that you wish, that you feel might be needed. Also, it's a good time to introduce some of the new council members to some of these committees, so that they can participate and be, be part of some of the items that we do.
Okay. I'll come back to the top part, which is the city council for mayor and mayor pro tem. And we'll start with the outside committees. And the first one is Barstow Area Chamber of Commerce. Now, I'm gonna ask these councilmember if they're interested, but I'd like to state first that I am interested in being the primary representative. I do attend every Chamber of Commerce meeting already, and I've missed one this year, which was the day they cut the ribbon for the bridge, because I was out sick. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have any interest in that committee?
The chamber, no.
Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Rose?
I will say yes, if Mr. Williams is not interested. If he is, then he's welcome to it.
Okay. Councilmember Hernandez, I have you in the queue, is that?
Oh, okay. The correction was on the San Bernardino Transportation Authority.
I'm gonna take them one at a time.
Oh, okay. That, that list, it wasn't correct.
Okay. So if the council agrees, I will take representative, primary representative for the Barstow Area Chamber of Commerce. And Councilmember Rose will be the alternate. Is that correct? Okay, next, we have League of Cities. Our representative was the mayor, Courtney, and the alternate was Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have any interest in that committee? Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Rose?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Okay. Then I would recommend that Councilmember Noble be the primary, and I will be the alternate. Does everyone agree?
Yes.
Military affairs, currently, we have Councilmember Noble as primary and Councilmember Rose as alternate. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have any interest in that committee?
No.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Rose?
I will say yes, if nobody else would like this.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Okay. My recommendation would be to keep Councilmember Noble as the primary, and Ms. Councilmember Williams is the alternate. Now, I do attend that committee, however, we don't speak there regarding councilmember business. I'm gonna ask for the city attorney's opinion. If three councilmembers were there, and we don't discuss business, that is okay with the Brown Act, is that correct?
Yes, because that's an open and public meeting of a community group, and the council members are not making city decisions in that space, yes.
Okay, next, we have the Mojave Air Quality Management District. Our primary currently is Councilmember Hernandez, alternate is Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have any interest in me? Okay. Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Rose?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Okay. Then we will maintain that committee, if all agree. Councilmember Hernandez is primary, and Councilmember Noble is the alternate. I must disclose that I do sit on their commission, not their committee. I did check with them, they said that is not an issue. The San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, or SBCTA, Councilmember Hernandez has been covering that after the mayor stepped down. I am gonna request that I be the primary on that. That's always been custom for the mayor to sit primary on there. There was a separate issue as to why the mayor stepped, prior mayor stepped down. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have an interest in maintaining that committee?
Yes.
Council...
There's four meetings a month on that. I have no problem with you doing the four meetings, I can be the alternate.
Okay. Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Rose?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Okay. Recommendation would be then, that I, the mayor, the primary representative, and Councilmember Hernandez, the alternate. Next, we have the Solid Waste Advisory Task Force, or SWAT. Councilmember Cruz was the primary, and Councilmember Noble was the alternate. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have any interest in that committee? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Rose?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Nope.
All right, let me take a look and see how many primaries we have, Noble.
Two.
And... Okay, so Councilmember Hernandez, the recommendation would be that you be the primary, and Councilmember Noble, the alternate. Okay, Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, Councilmember Courtney was primary, and Councilmember Cruz was alternate. I do have an interest in that one. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have an interest in that committee?
That's, that's part of the SBCTA.
Correct.
So you would be...
Okay, so we'll keep that the same.
Yeah.
Okay, and you'll be the alternate. Does everyone agree with that?
Yes.
The Southern California Edison Government Advisory Panel, or GAP, we had Councilmember Hernandez primary, and Councilmember Joya Cruz, alternate. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have an interest in staying on that committee?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble, do you have any interest in that committee?
No.
Councilmember Rose?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Hernandez, we'll leave you as primary, I'll take the alternate. The Victor Valley Transit Authority, Councilmember Noble, we had primary and Councilmember Cruz was the alternate. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have any interest in that committee? Councilmember Noble, do you have any interest in that committee? Councilmember Rose?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Okay, my recommendation would be we leave Councilmember Noble primary and Councilmember Hernandez would be the alternate. Internal Committees, we have the Finance, currently, or it was, Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Hernandez. How often does the Finance Committee meet? I'm sorry. Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry.
But that committee doesn't, we haven't used that committee in a while.
Waste, I don't have wastewater on mine, so, okay. When is the last time wastewater met?
I think the only time it was, it was years ago when there was a project.
We formed it when we were getting the cease and desist and we were doing a lot of improvements. Okay. We'll, if no one objects, we'll counsel that committee, we'll bring it back if we ever feel it's needed. Okay, Finance and Audit, Councilmember Hernandez, did you have an interest in that committee? Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Rose?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Okay, I would recommend that, Councilmember Williams, you are not heading any committee. You know, do you want to chair that or do you want to be the alternate?
Alternate.
Okay. Recommendation then would be Councilmember Hernandez as the primary representative and Councilmember Williams as the alternate. The Homeward Bound Ad Hoc Committee, currently, we have Councilmember Rose, sorry, as the chair and Councilmember Hernandez is the second. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have a interest in staying on that committee? Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Rose?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Okay, my recommendation then would be Councilmember Rose and Councilmember Williams. And Councilmember Williams, did you want to chair a committee?
No.
Okay, then it would be, chair would be Councilmember Rose. Now, these are committees, I should have mentioned, that are attended by both council members, these internal committees. For Mr. Williams, I needed to explain that. Rules and Policy, currently, we have Councilmember Rose primary and, I'm sorry, for chair and Councilmember Cruz was the second. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have an interest in that committee? Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Rose?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Williams, you're not chairing any committees, did you have an interest in being the chair?
No.
Okay, my recommendation would be that Councilmember Rose be the chair and you be second on the Rules and Policy Committee. We have the Street Committee. It was Chair, Councilmember Cruz, and second, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have an interest in staying on that committee? Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Rose?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Oh, yes.
I wanted to be on that one also, but I'm gonna, okay. Okay, I'm gonna put Councilmember Williams on there. I know he's got very good knowledge of the streets that need repair. Councilmember Hernandez, I'm gonna ask that you please let me chair that committee. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
On the list that was provided to me, it has Barstow Gaming Committee.
Well, I was gonna bring that up. I want to bring back the Barstow Gaming Committee. I would ask that I be allowed to chair that. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have any interest in the Barstow Gaming Committee? Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Rose?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Okay, then the recommendation would be that I share the Barstow, we bring back the Barstow Gaming Committee, I chair it, and with that, sitting second seat would be Councilmember Hernandez. Staff, is everything clear there? Okay. Do we need a motion to approve this legal counsel?
Yes, one motion would be sufficient and there may be public comment?
I'm gonna ask, I still have, do I have any public comment on the committee reports?
Yes, sir. Are we taking public comment?
Hold on just a minute, I forgot to go back to the top. My recommendation for Mayor Pro Tem, which would then be the vice chair for the Barstow Fire Protection District, would be Councilmember Rose. Do I have anybody on council questioning that? Okay, that completes the recommendations, public comment, please.
I have Rose Beerchair.
Mayor, council, and staff, Rose Beerchair from New Life Fellowship. Just wanted to make a few comments on the Homeward Bound Committee. The original Homeward Bound Committee was held at New Hope Village with Angela leading and community members. So Julie Hackarth, Tim Silva, Billy Braun, Robin Lard, myself, and Belinda Barber. On Belinda's recommendation, it was made into a subcommittee, official subcommittee of the city. That was four years ago. And since that time, there hasn't been a lot of progress toward the homeless. They have finalized a strategic plan. And most recently, Carmen, I want to thank you for your letter of support in getting Chris Heldrich to our New Life Fellowship property. And greatly appreciate that. We're considering some housing units on the four vacant lots that we own. And I'm sad that you're not gonna be on there, but I'm excited about moving forward and I hope we can tackle some action items and the city can get some skin in the game as far as the homeless situation that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
That is all the comment we have on this item.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more questions from the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I shall move.
I have a first by, I have a first by Councilmember Noble, a second by Councilmember Hernandez. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
I am waiting for one vote, thank you. The motion to approve the organization passes unanimously with, I'll read out what we have. We have our Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Rose, and the Barstow Fire Protection District also as vice chair, Mayor Pro Tem Rose. For the Barstow Area Chamber of Commerce, we have Mayor Tim Silva and Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Rose. League of California Cities, Councilmember Noble, Mayor Silva. Military Affairs is Councilmember Noble and Councilmember Williams. The Mojave Desert Air Quality Management, Councilmember Hernandez, and the alternate, Councilmember Noble. SBCTA, Mayor Silva and Councilmember Hernandez. The Solid Waste Advisory Task Force, NJPA, Councilmember Hernandez and Councilmember Noble. SCAG, Mayor Silva, Councilmember Hernandez. The Southern California Edison Government, I have Councilmember Hernandez and Mayor Silva. VVTA, I have Councilmember Noble and Councilmember Hernandez. We are canceling the committee for the wastewater reclamation facility. We are bringing back the Barstow Gaming Committee with Mayor Silva and Councilmember Hernandez. Finance and Audit, we have Councilmember Hernandez and Councilmember Williams. Homeward Bound, we have Mayor Pro Tem Rose and Councilmember Williams. Rules and Policy, Mayor Pro Tem Rose and Councilmember Williams. And our last committee is the Street Committee with Mayor Silva and Councilmember Williams.
No, I asked you if I could share that and you said yes. So it would be, yes. Have we motioned and voted?
I know, what I'm saying, I'm just saying, that's not what I understood.
Okay. Okay, that completes the business action items. We're gonna move on to general non-agenda public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters not on the agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Ms. City Clerk?
Yes, our first speaker is Mr. John Hill.
Welcome, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. John Hill, local artist and researcher. I know the last mayor had a really hard time, everyone had a lot of hard times. I know you don't want anything to do with that anymore, but I wanted to give you that my family was possibly victims of a lending crime back in 2005. It blew us apart. I bet you don't even know Barbara Rose is my cousin by marriage. Just wiped us out. And last year, I tried to bring it to my family and no one wants to talk about it. Not even, not even the police officers in my family want to talk about it. That's how hard this has been. So I give it to city manager, you're in the police field and the lawyers, to take this in about what it's been doing to our country, because it's $2 billion. It's a big crime and it's not just, it's not the only bank that's been doing it. So I just want to give you that to consider about where you're getting hit, to always counter each other, because it's coming from the crime world in my, in my experience, my personal experience. I have some amazing research. It started with Mr. Courtney and he kind of brought it through. I have a way to end war, actually, and it actually will give us a chance to heal the planet. But that's not, that's just a small part of it. I got that to Mr. Obolanti, he has it in DC. It's with my bishop in San Bernardino Diocese, I'm trying to get it to the president and to the pope. But the research itself comes all the way into Barstow and it connects us to Anquiat, Stonehenge, Giza, the Vatican, Cuicuilco in Mexico, Gothic Circle in Germany, Newark Circle in Ohio, and then it continues from there. It's amazing. I've been trying to get it out, I'm trying, I'm trying to get a lecture at the museum right now. But just something amazing for the city to consider. I have the Intention of the May, the National Museum of the American Indian. Like I said, with Mr. Obolanti. I think the hardships that we went through also are what hurt the bridge. And I hope we rebuild a new one. I hope we put in a new arch platform, because you can't take pictures off the new one. So it'd be good to have an arch platform, because I think it'd bring millions of dollars to the city with people paying to beat up their, renting cars, getting hotels. The Wild Roses is something that I've suggested. Prince William, Shohei Ohtani, Freddie Freeman, all like the idea of a women's sister team for the MLB. We have Dino Ebel there, that could be a good way for us to get in. And the sports park could actually be the winter ground for them. I'm hoping that we'll save the pines, Ms. Carmen Hernandez. I think we're wasting our arts district right now and I don't mean it on anyone personally. Ms. Genesis explained the city doesn't really have a lot to do with it, but I thought maybe if we could recommend a lot of arts businesses going in, like a music club, a dance club, a children's theater, a candy store, toy store, all kinds of places where artists would like to go, that the people will love it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Our next speaker is Ms. Rose Beerchair.
Welcome, Ms. Beerchair.
Thank you. So I just want to bring up, I haven't seen this on the radar or heard much about it and when I Google it, it doesn't come up. But it is a grant that the city received, an award letter to Willie Hopkins back in July 2022 from the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services. The grant was for $732,000 for a performance period from July 22 to February 2027. The funds were deposited in August of 2023 and an RFP went out to hire a climate resilience officer. And it just kind of lost momentum. But because I've done a public records request and been in contact with Genesis, she said that after corresponding with the governor's office, that you are bound to using the funding solely to contract for a climate resiliency officer. And this, the reason I'm so interested is I feel like there's a lot of deliverables in this grant that will help our vulnerable community, including the homeless. And I'm offering, you know, any help with our building to hold public meetings because there's a lot of outreach involved in finalizing this plan. One of the paragraphs that was written in the grant, "The community has a high percentage of low-income members and the highest death rate in San Bernardino County for five major causes of death: heart disease, cancer, chronic lower respiratory diseases, stroke, and accidents. Infant mortality is highest in the state and higher than some third-world countries." So it's an important grant and I appreciate you moving forward with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Beerchair.
Our next speaker is Mr. E.T. Snell.
Welcome, Mr. Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just, Chief lied so many times. You guys better get rid of him, because with that dog thing, the way he's messed that up, I mean, I just can't see a police officer going out there, picking up a dog and putting it in the back of his patrol car. I don't know how he's got it set up, but I guarantee you it's not right. And I guarantee you guys are open to big lawsuits. Barbara Rose, last council meeting. You know, I was really proud of you the way you stood up. And then Carmen and Mr. Nobles, that was shameful the way you guys didn't support her. Maybe you can tell me why. But you did a real good job, Barbara, I was, I was really proud of you. And last meeting, I noticed Mr. Nobles and Carmen left you standing alone against having a new council vote. In fact, Mr. Silva asked it to. So Carmen and Mr. Nobles, you will be under my watchful eye. This meeting tonight was supposed to be at 7:00. I'd like to find out, was it properly noticed for 6:00 or did they just move it? How did that happen? Tex and Mr. Silva, thank you for calling me and letting me know that the meeting was moved up. I appreciate that, you guys. You know, Paul left, that's a good thing, with a million dollars. You know, our city attorney over here, Mr. Genius, will tell you that you, a government giveaway of public funds is illegal. But yet, the Marriott, when they took that million dollars, and this is what I don't understand, Mr. Nobles, another one of your bonehead moves, I can't understand why you voted for that. The city never got nothing, the people never got nothing. You can't give away $2 million and the city not get nothing. That's illegal, Mr. City Attorney. And how you got away with that is beyond me, 2.2 million. So Paul got out, and then Mr. Nobles, you voted for it, that's a giveaway of public funds. I was surprised nobody caught that. And you know, it's not like Barstow can afford to give away $2 million. And I was just, I'm appalled at what happened in that deal. And, you know, I'm just, I'll be watching you guys for your next bonehead move. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez. Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. My first question is the giveaway that the city made of $61,000. Let me see, $61,931 to the Marriott. I've given you paperwork showing, at the last meeting, the council approved this. Mr. Silva, you weren't here. Tex, you weren't here. I mean, you were here, but I mean, you didn't vote on it. I still want to know why you gave them nearly $62,000 to make them whole when they only ran the business for 11 months and only collected bed tax for 11 months, not 12. They started 11 of '23, and it was 12 of '23 when they got the second, and then up to September. So that makes it 11 months. So why did you stop working on the contract, said they had to be there 12 months, and then we would make them whole? But if you only collected for 11 months, why are we making them whole and using public funds? That's a gift of public funds. Because this belongs to the bed tax, which is, belongs to the general fund. And if you're making them whole under 11 months, you're giving away $62,000 nearly. And I want to know an explanation for it. Why did you do it? I talked to Sydney. Sydney says, well, they opened in October. But they didn't collect any bed tax in October. It wasn't open to rent. So why are you making them whole? Why are you spending public money to support a person that lied to us and took advantage of us and is still taking advantage of us, and you're giving money to them? Next item is, Rose, at the last meeting, you were talking about air quality. You're in charge of the rules and policy. How come we don't have rules for the vendors that are coming in here to open a business, that they have timeframes to put in the air quality for their business? Why did it take nearly two years to get the existing people to fix the quality of the air? It took over a year, and I filed a complaint with the air quality board, and they came up here and looked at it, said the air was bad. And we had five businesses, six. Five of them did repairs. Now three of them are out of compliance again. What kind of a system did they put in? And why isn't somebody from the city that's being paid a salary find out what's going on here? Why hasn't somebody put in a system, and six months later, it's no good?
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Our next speaker is Mr. Perry Pack.
Welcome, Mr. Pack.
Thank you. It seems like we have a lot of people out here that are pretty bright, and they got their eyes on you. And I'd say, even those that are newly council members, you guys want to take note of that. Another thing that I, I propose is we should have leadership from the elderly in our community. We should start a committee of the seniors in our community and get some good ideas about what city are we having? A good friend of mine said, is this what we're doing? Is this what we're going to do? Is this what our city is going to be? I'd say a lot of the seniors have a lot of good input on that. Another committee would be from the youth of the city. Get their ideas about what they want for the future of Barstow, because the future is for them. So in all that, I don't blame any of the council members here now for anything that's happened in the past. I say we should move forward from here with the new council. Get our ideas straight. And like I said before, when we get things going, we want to hit the ground running. We don't want to crawl. We don't want to fall. We don't want to be paying millions of dollars because we didn't hit the ground running. And we can. We have good staff. We have good people that are willing to come up here and tell you what they want for their city. And we have what I believe, a good council. If you guys work together and get things done in a proper manner, we will have a great city. And remember, the city is the people.
Thank you, Mr. Pack.
And our last speaker tonight is Mr. Jim Brown. He has passed. We have no more to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. With that, we'll go to public safety updates.
Nothing from the police department?
Nothing from the fire department. We keep getting interest from the burn permit restrictions we do have. We're going to go ahead and restrict, unrestrict once the first wetting rain comes. So for public knowledge, that's hopefully soon, but I can't guarantee you the rain's going to fall.
Thank you, Mr. Sissor. City manager comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza. Council committee reports. Councilmember Hernandez?
San Bernardino Transportation Authority, on December the 4th, there were four items of interest. They're going to do away with call boxes in San Bernardino County. They're going to request a discontinued resolution of necessary hearings at committee level. So it's going to be heard, basically, it's eminent domain, and it will be heard at the full board. So that's the other item, and... They have, they're working on the 395 expansion in Asperia and Victorville. And they did purchase all the property that was needed to complete that project, and they only had to go to court on eminent domain on three out of 76 requests. And with that, I'm also giving you this, because you're going to be doing that. The next one is S C A G. So let me share with you what S C A G is doing. That was on December the 5th. And they're talking about sustainability and groundwater concerns. So they've done a report on that. And this last one was on the electric grid readiness. If we turn everything into electricity, well, how are you going to actually be able to do that? And they had the recommendations, and they did a riverside study. So here you go. That's yours too now. And the Mountain Desert Policy Committee, and that's, the items on that is the concern over our overflow bridge and the river bridge. And the saddest part I heard was the importance of lobbyists and the fact that we, as the city, had done away with them. That is very important, so you need to really get involved in that, because it is on the list for projects, you know how they go 10 years ahead. And so, there you go, sir.
Thank you.
And, let's see, then we had the Homeward Bound Committee, but I'll let our Mayor Pro Tem do the report on that. We did not have a quorum, but we did have a discussion, and she can give you further details on that. I think that was all my meanings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Our Victor Valley Transit Authority will meet in January 21st of 2025, not only 20th, due to the Martin Luther King Day celebration on that day. I attended the Military Affairs Meeting. A couple of things came out, just want the public to know about. In early 2025, somewhere around that timeframe, we're going to do a Veterans Day barbecue, recognizing all the veterans here in the local city of Barstow and the surrounding community. We have a committee that is put together identifying things that we want to do for that particular day. And if you're interested in being a part of that committee, please reach out to Renita or Dee Dee Krieger for information on when they're going to meet and the times that they're going to meet. Also, early next year, they're going to do the Military Ball. It's going to be in Las Vegas next year. So those of you that are interested in telling the Military Ball, that will be in Las Vegas for 2025. Also, the United Support Veterans Group put out their schedule for F Y 25 and a host of things that they're going to be doing from, starting in February all the way out until December. So if anybody's interested in some of the activities that are going on, just see me. I can give you a copy of this, some of the events that's going to be happening, from fishing to remember its 9/11, remember its day that they're going to be doing. All veterans living at the Veterans Home in October, things of that nature that they're going to be doing, just to focus on veterans throughout the city. And with that, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Rose?
Thank you. So the Homeward Bound Committee did meet December 11th. There was not a quorum. Both council members were present. Unfortunately, we did not have the rest of our committee members present. But we did allow a presentation from San Manuel and a presentation for them, just to get the word out, reach out to the nonprofits. They can apply up to $100,000 in grants. They have a very stringent process, and they are out there and willing to help nonprofits. Other than that, that's, that's pretty much what we did. I do have, want to thank Ms. Beersher for speaking of the Homeward Bound and congratulate you on your upcoming projects that you're doing for our community. For the last four years, we have done a lot of things. And they may not seem like actionable things, but what I believe that we have done, we have made, you know, an impact, whether it's considered small, medium, or large. We've done an impact because we've, we've collected and we've combined a resource list that is maintained by the city. We have collaborated amongst the nonprofits on the resources and everything that they do for our community, and some nonprofits partner up to help our community. Each and every person that comes to this committee are pretty amazing on what they do for Barstow. We've also gathered so much. We've gathered water. We've gathered donations, clothing. The Barstow Hospital donated 400 pairs of socks just recently. So these are things that the Homeward Bound has done in the last four years. Yes, I do believe that we have to continue to move forward, and I'm still very, very hopeful that we will have a homeless coordinator budgeted in this next upcoming budget. I believe that our interim city manager is working on that. He has come to one of the meetings and asked questions. So this committee will be pursuing this in hopes that we do have a coordinator that can be the central source or the central point for, for the homeless. The next meeting for the Homeward Bound Committee is going to be January 9th, and it's actually going to be the training for the Point and Count. It's going to be 5:00 PM here in the council chambers. If you're interested in being part of the Point and Count, please, please let our city know. And the rules and policy, I believe that we're not going to be meeting here in December, because we will be, the city hall will be closed for the holidays. But if my calculations on my calendar are correct, the next meeting would be January 28th, and that would be 9:00 PM in the council chambers, 9:00 AM, thank you, in the council chambers. And that's it for my committee reports.
Thank you, Councilmember Rose. Councilmember Williams, I know you have no committees to report on. Did you have anything to speak of, of your upcoming committees?
Nope. Thank you, Councilmember Williams. And although I was not on any committees, I did attend Homeward Bound. I was attending it representing my church, St. Joseph's. So I will not be attending that, and I'll try to find somebody else from my parish to attend that. So with the meeting concluded, we're going to adjourn this evening in memory of David Villa Fana. And with no objection, this meeting is closed.